We have a quorum and it's seven o'clock, so I'll call to order the Board of Selectmen meeting for October 17, 2016, and we open all of our meetings with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
All right, as is usual, the first item on the agenda is citizens' concerns. This is an opportunity for any citizens to come forward and raise issues which are not on the agenda. And so is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak to an issue that's not on the agenda tonight? Okay, seeing none, I will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the chairman's update. I'll remind people that the Community Preservation Coalition is -- Coalition, Community Preservation Committee in Acton is accepting applications for funding CPC projects for -- that'll be considered at next annual town meeting in April. And those applications are due by the middle of November, so if you have a project that you feel is appropriate under the Recreation, Historic Preservation, Open Space, or Affordable Housing Funding Possibilities under the Community Preservation Act, you need to get that proposal in to the committee by the middle of November. Once again, voting this year for the first time under new state law for the presidential election, and statewide elections is going to be open to early voting. The town clerk will be publishing times and dates for that. I believe it might be October 24th that the -- it opens. I may be wrong about that. You can check the clerk's website. But there'll be voting booths set up, I believe in this room, from early morning and some evenings that people can have more flexibility to vote rather than just on November 8th. And we urge, obviously, everyone to get out because your vote counts. In terms of town volunteers, we need people for the planning board, particularly deals with subdivision approvals in town. There are a couple of resignations from that board, the latest one to take effect at the end of this year. That will take the board down to only four members, which will not allow them to conduct a lot of the business that they need to do. So please consider volunteering your services to the town's planning board. I will ask the town manager to put on a future agenda the issue of the planning board and its membership, and ask the VCC and the planning staff to come in and talk to us about how we can try to resolve that issue and recruit more members to our planning board. You probably have noticed that Town Hall is a different color. If you have not been following town issues in detail, it's been debated for a number of years. The color is accurate to the original historic colors that Town Hall was painted. It's not true that all Town Halls are white. In the 1863, when our Town Hall was built, the decision was made to paint it colors which -- earth tones which reflected the surrounding landscape. And even though we don't have a dirt road leading up to our front door anymore, it is a very historic building, obviously a prominent building in town. And the selectmen, after a long process, voted to restore it to its historically accurate colors to reflect the historic history, the historic nature of the building. At the train station, a new train station, there's been complaints by neighbors about lighting, intruding into their houses on Maple Street. The MBTA has finally resolved that problem. They took some lights down. They lowered other lights that were there, so that problem seems to have been resolved. I want to particularly thank Senator Jamie Eldridge for his work with the MBTA, which is not easy to get them to accomplish that. And finally, once again, remind people that the continued hearing on Concord's application for a special permit for their new water treatment plant will be continued on November 1st in this room. Oh, it won't be in this room, I'm sorry. We will be in the junior high school -- the high school auditorium on November 1st, so there'll be plenty of room. We had quite a crowd the last time, so we will post that notice and hold that hearing in the high school auditorium, the same room where we have town meeting. So thank you for that reminder. And I'll turn it over to Town Manager Steve Ledoux.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, last week, we concluded our annual On the Hill Budget Review, where all our town departments presented their budget requests, both operational and capital. And we spent two days seeing their -- seeing their budget requests. Now we're fully into budget season. Our budget team will be meeting all day, every Thursday, up until I present the budget to the selectmen the last meeting before Christmas. So we are now officially in budget season for FY18. This morning Janet and I attended a meeting at the Lexington Town Hall concerning Minuteman and the apparent desire of Belmont to withdraw from the Minuteman Regional School District. Minuteman is having -- excuse me, Belmont is having a special town meeting on Wednesday night to consider withdrawing from the district. It takes a two-thirds vote of town meeting. They do have a representative town meeting. There were representatives from a lot of the district towns this morning, primarily, there were a few Belmont folks, some from their -- from their -- they have representative town meetings, so some town meeting members, some FinCom members, some selectmen, and the town manager. The general sense, and Janet can certainly chime in on the conversation, is there's still concern about the size of the new proposed Minuteman School, and they object to the size of the building. And that's one of their impetuses for pulling out. Now, the process is if, in fact, they get two-thirds vote, each town has the ability to call a town meeting to not allow them to withdraw. And this kind of works like it did with the capital, that if, in fact, you don't call a town meeting, then in essence you're agreeing for them to withdraw. So we'll see what happens Wednesday night. You know, two-thirds votes in a lot of towns is usually hard to pull, as we know. But we'll see what happens. And Janet, I don't know if you want to add anything?
Well, at least one person from Belmont said that he was -- that the big hang-up was the building side. I think that other people in Belmont have different ideas about what the issue was. I think some of them were concerned about the cost. But as Steve said, there will be a vote on Wednesday. It requires two-thirds vote. And although the town meeting members are the same people who voted down the building project at their annual town meeting, it's apparently not necessarily clear that they will also vote to withdraw. So nobody from Belmont was willing to make any predictions. But if they get the two-thirds vote, the Belmont town clerk has to report that to the district. The school committee has to formally pass along the vote to the 16 town members of the district. And then at that point, the 60-day period kicks in. Every town has the option of calling a town meeting to weigh in on the proposed withdrawal. And if you, as a town, choose not to take any action, it is by default deemed an approval. If their withdrawal is approved, they are on the slow withdrawal process. They don't get to take advantage of the fast withdrawal process pursuant to which six towns will be out of the district as of next July. They will be in the district for three years. And withdrawing, I think it'll probably be July of 2020, which is just months before the new building, school building, is supposed to be completed. So three years is a long time, and I would guess that there's going to be a lot of conversation going back and forth, because there are still people in Belmont who would like to stay in the district. And I think Belmont, some of the Belmont people who are trying to get out are assuming that it will be cheaper for them to send their students to Minuteman as non-member towns. And that probably, that might not be true. So there'll be an education process ongoing during the three years that they are members. If, on Wednesday, they fail to get the two-thirds vote to approve withdrawal, then they are still members of the district, and they are also obligated for the new building project, their share of the capital. If they get the two-thirds vote and they withdraw from the district, they will be members of the district for three years, but they're not on the hook for the capital for the new building project. So but there are people from other towns in the district who will be going to the town meeting on Wednesday. I don't know what -- they're trying, there are people who are trying to talk to individual town meeting members and persuade them one by one. The vote was not so big that it's an insurmountable obstacle to get the reverse vote, have the vote be to support staying in, but we'll see anyhow.
Okay, thanks. We have gotten a couple of dates from the town of Concord to do a site visit for the water treatment plants. The dates, they have given me are Friday, October 28th, anytime between 10:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. And Monday, October 31st, Halloween, anytime between 10:00 a.m. and 1:00 p.m. So I don't know which of these may work for the board. I'm okay with either date.
I'm okay with both of those.
I need to do the 10:00 a.m. at the very latest because I got to get to my actual job in Boston, and would prefer the Friday morning, the 28th.
Okay, so does 10:00 a.m. on Friday, the 28th, work for everybody?
Yeah. How long do you think it'll take? I have a lunch meeting, but I can get out of it.
Well, that'll end the meeting then.
Yeah, assuming that it's not going to take -- and I assume we'll have some sort of roles, because I assume that there'll be some neighbors or butters trying to come along, and they need to understand that we can't engage in any kind of discussion.
Yeah, we'll have to say that upfront when we get there.
Yeah, so we'll make sure it gets posted, even though we don't necessarily have to. We talked about that. And can you ask Lisa to forward that to Carolyn Kiley, so she can get it out to the neighborhood?
Yeah. And finally, we had an Acton Leadership Group meeting last Thursday morning. Pretty much the discussion was the preliminary point of view of the finance committee. They're still in the process of finalizing it, so we kind of agreed we wouldn't bring the preliminary to all the other boards, so we wouldn't necessarily confuse them if anything changed. I think, based on the discussion that that morning, the intent would be to review the point of view at the tribe board's meeting, which is slated for November 15th. In the meantime, their point of view will be finalized, and both the selectmen and the school committee will have a chance to review it at our next, probably our next meeting, before we have the tri-board meeting. So just want to give everybody a heads up on that. That'll be coming. And that's my report.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is a common victular license, an application for a common victular license for Dristy LLC, doing business as Subway Restaurant at two locations, 134 Gray Road and 255 Main Street. Mr. Dristy, please come forward, stand at the podium, make sure you turn on the microphone because we're being, we're on TV. People can't hear you if you don't speak into the microphone, and just state your name, please.
My name is Priyank Patel.
Okay, what are you looking for tonight?
Commonwealth mature license.
I'm sorry. Okay, your first name shortened is Dristy, and your last name is Patel, right? Okay. We have an application here. We have responses from the police chief and the fire chief, health department, planning department, building department. None of them object to this. This is just a food license, a license to serve food, doesn't include alcoholic beverages. Any comments from members of the Board of Selectmen?
I'm just, I just noticed that you said you hadn't owned, I guess, another common -- well, you hadn't held a common victular license before, but I was wondering if you have experience working in a place like Subway or managing a place like Subway?
Yes, ma'am. I've been working in Subway for the last five years.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the two common victular licenses.
Second?
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
All right, next item on the agenda is a presentation by Insulet Corporation.
And let me just do a little introduction. We met with folks from Insulet about a week and a half ago. They're going to tell you all about their company, but right now they're based in Billerica. They are looking at 100 Nagog Park, which is about a 200,000 square foot building in Nagog Park that's been vacant for quite some time. So they have a very, I think, a very exciting product and a very interesting operation that I think certainly would enhance the town. So they're here this evening to just talk about themselves a little bit, and then to see if the board would entertain myself and town staff to start working on some form of financial incentive to move forward with them. So I don't know Michael or Steve or who's making the presentation.
Okay, I see you have a PowerPoint, so we ask you to take these seats up here and use the microphones as part of your presentation also. Probably you can use these, or you'd rather stand at the podium, whichever is you're more comfortable with.
Good evening. Great to be here. My name is Pat Sullivan. I'm the president and CEO of Insulet Corporation. It's a pleasure to meet with you this evening. A little bit of background on me, I have, I live in Sudbury, actually, right next door. My kids grew up in the -- we've been here for 25 years in New England. My kids all went to this Lincoln Sudbury High School. We played act in Boxborough all the time, so I know the rivalry. And actually ran a company that was located in Boxborough, Massachusetts, a women's healthcare company. We also had facilities in Marlborough. So this area, 495, the Acton, Boxborough, Marlborough areas is one that I'm very familiar with and appreciate very much. What I'd like to talk with you this evening is a little bit about Insulet Corporation. We are a very innovative medical device company that are based in Billerica. It's our headquarters. We were founded in 2000 with a very important mission of improving the lives of people with diabetes, particularly those with type 1 diabetes who have the need for insulin. We are in a very rapid growth mode and are growing our revenue at over 30% per year. Just to give you a little bit of background on diabetes and the importance of our product, diabetes affects about 1.7 million people in the United States. It's a case where a person's pancreas basically shuts down and it doesn't work. It can happen at birth. It can happen later in life as an adolescent, or even in your 50s and 60s, where your pancreas basically stops functioning and doesn't deliver insulin to the body, which basically controls the amount of glucose. And for people who are diabetic, type 1 diabetes, they're forced to measure their glucose level six times a day. And if it's too high, they end up giving themselves an injection, an injection of insulin that basically reduces their glucose levels and allows them to live a normal life. That is a very laborious, it's a very time-consuming, and for patients, and for parents in particular, it's really challenging to manage a child with type 1 diabetes. In the 1990s, pump therapy came into being whereby rather than having patients inject themselves six times a day, a pump was provided with insulin in it that would allow you to inject insulin into the patient's body. We have a very different innovative technology that rather than having a tubed pump on the patient's belt that is tethered with 42 inches of tubing that goes into the patient's abdomen, we have a wearable insulin delivery device. So this is our Omnipod device. This is placed on the patient's body, and it's controlled by a -- we'll hand them out here. It's controlled by a wireless device that provides for the injection of insulin wirelessly from this device into the patient that the patient wears on their arm, either arm, on their abdomen, on their buttocks, et cetera, that really provides them the freedom to live their lives as a normal person would. So you can imagine a child playing basketball, baseball, hockey, whatever. If you're wearing a tubed pump, it basically is a pump that you wear on your belt, and to that tubed pump you have 42 inches of tubing that goes from the pump that contains the insulin into your body. And rather than this configuration, our technology allows it to be self-contained on the patient's body, which gives them complete freedom to do and live their normal life. This device is waterproof, so that people can shower with it, kids can go swimming, and it really allows them to live a very normal life as children and adults would live a normal life, rather than being tubed with this other type of device. Of the 1.7 million people in the United States, only about half of them, 500,000 people use the tubed pump technology. Today, we have, of that 500,000, we have about 100,000 patients worldwide that use the product. About 80,000 or 75,000 or so in the United States use our product, 25,000 to 30,000 outside the United States. And we're a company, we're a publicly traded company, about $300 million in revenue, a little bit more, with about 600 employees in the United States. Today, our manufacturing operations are located in China. The manufacturing, these devices are good for three days, so the patient wears it for three days. They put it on their body, wear it for three days. After three days, they throw it away and put a new pod on. So it's a reusable device. It's currently manufactured in China, and we will manufacture in our Chinese operation about 17 million of these pods, what we call the pods, the Omnipod, this year in China. What we're looking to do, and why we are so excited about the opportunity here in Acton, is that we are expanding our manufacturing operation and have really focused on expanding the next location in the United States. We've looked across the United States, and there are many places where you can put manufacturing operations that have the right talent of people, the right logistics and location for the distribution of the product. But since we're located in Billerica, you know, we are very interested in the location in the Commonwealth, and Acton is a very attractive site for us. So we anticipate building, or actually occupying a building, we're going to invest about 135, as noted on the PowerPoint presentation. We're going to spend about $130, $150 million in not only the plant, but the automated equipment that we are going to install at this facility, and really are at the latter stages of our site evaluation and determination. We've looked across the United States at probably 25 or 30 sites with consultants across the U.S. We've narrowed it down to five or so, and now we're in the final stages, making the final determination of where do we put the manufacturing location. We expect to, our plans are to acquire the site by the end of this year, so in the fourth quarter, we anticipate making this decision. And in order to meet our goal of having the site up and ready for manufacturing finished goods product by the first quarter of 2019, we really need to have the site ready to go by the end of 2017. So we're running on a very tight timeline here to understand the financial implications and the creation of jobs that we anticipate for the Commonwealth. And we anticipate somewhere in the 500 additional employees that we would hire to help support the operation of the fact of the plant in the Commonwealth. Basically, what we are looking for is something that would house manufacturing in a clean-room environment. In medical device manufacturing, as I'm sure you're aware, you need to have a very clean environment. you need to have a very clean environment. This product needs to be manufactured in a very clean environment, a class 100,000 clean room. And then it ultimately goes through a sterilization process that when it's provided to the patient, it's completely sterile. So the requirements in manufacturing are under FDA regulations. They're fairly onerous and there are high standards that we need to employ to manufacture this product. We're also thinking about adding or bringing some of the facility or if not all of the employees that we have in our current Billerica facility to a new site that potentially in the Acton site. We're down to really two separate options. One is a Massachusetts option, which would include the relocation of our existing Billerica location to this location. And the second is the state of Texas, which would require a relocation of a number of our current maintaining two locations, one in Massachusetts and the main operation, manufacturing operation would be in Texas. Some of the estimates that we have put together from a financial perspective, as I mentioned, 135 to 150 million dollars over a five-year period. The acquisition and the improvement costs we're anticipating for the plant would be around 40 million dollars. New equipment, and this would be highly sophisticated, automation and manufacturing equipment in the range of 100 million dollars in manufacturing. And over that period of time that we anticipate, the time horizon of this plant would be up and operational, we would expect to hire over 1,000 people in a manufacturing location. Massachusetts option would result in a majority of positions being, continue to be located in Massachusetts. And as I said, Texas would obviously have the relocation that would be required as well. The average wage of the employees would be around 80,000 dollars a year because the level of employee you need to have for these types of operations are highly educated and highly trained. And we provide a very comprehensive benefits package as well. So we've looked at Nagog Park. Currently, the, this is, as I understand it, an old deck facility and I actually have been in three different deck facilities in my career here in the Northeast. About 200,000 square feet, which is ideal for us. Gives us the opportunity to put the manufacturing operations in place as well as provide for, you know, additional room we would need for moving employees that we currently have in Billerica. So this is a very attractive location for us and it's not far from my house. So that's probably the, one of the major determinants in where we decide to put the facility. A little bit about the team. I'm the president and CEO. I've been at Insulet for about two years. Chuck Apulchi here is our senior vice president of global manufacturing and operations. A very long 30-year-plus history at PepsiCo where he was responsible for bottling operations in very automated sophisticated Pepsi plants. And Michael Levitz is our senior vice president and chief financial officer of the company. Any questions? I'd be happy to answer any questions that the selectmen might have.
Franny?
Do you want questions and comments or just questions?
Both, it's fine.
Questions, comments?
Okay, well, I'm really excited about this possibility. I know that that building or some of the buildings there have been vacant for a while and it's really, I want to do everything we can to make it attractive for new companies to come here. So I really, I'm excited about that possibility. I had one comment and a question. One is, I didn't know if you are aware or would have needs for people who might want to use public transportation to get to town because we have a lot of initiatives going, including it's called Crosstown Connect and it's a public-private transportation management association. And we're starting to have last mile transportation from the train to that area. So I wanted you to know about that.
Did know about that, thank you. The train station right there at?
Yes.
Hey Franny, we did discuss it with the other guys a week and a half ago.
Oh, good.
I was traveling.
Okay. There are a lot of possibilities and I was just talking to the head of the Metro West Regional Transit Authority and he has the same dream as I do of connecting that one, which includes Sudbury up through this area. So who knows, maybe someday you could take the bus to work.
I'd love to take the bus to work.
And also I had a question. I know some companies, if you have federal money coming in, they have a certain amount of people with disabilities that you have to hire. Do you have that? Or is that, I don't know how the rules, the law works, but.
I'm not familiar with that.
I remember hearing about, because IBM in Littleton was talking about looking for people with disabilities based on that.
Yes, so I'm Chuck Apulchi, as Pat said. I'm leading the project for the new manufacturing facility. My experience at PepsiCo, I have actually talked about that. There will be some work that won't be as automated as, for instance, putting these boxes of 10 in a box or pods in a box. That'll be a manual process. What we did at PepsiCo, we used handicap, folks with special needs, et cetera. So I am a big, big supporter and proponent of that, especially with the some with special needs. So absolutely, we are looking at that.
We have a very strong commission on disabilities and with the transportation, it would be a good environment for that. Thanks.
Janet?
Well, first of all, I actually grew up in Sudbury and I'm an alum of Lincoln Sudbury, the old building that no longer exists. I predate your kids by a long shot, but anyhow. And yes, when I moved to Acton, I became very aware that, because I didn't really follow Lincoln Sudbury sports, I became very aware that, yeah, that AB and LSR were arch rivals and sort of tried to stay out of it. I have a question about, I guess, the Nagog Park facility. I know that, I think it says that it's 200 square feet and I know you said in your earlier slide, you said that you needed 150K for offices and 100, you were looking for, it looked like 300,000 square feet. And I was wondering if the fact that the space in Nagog Park is 100,000 square feet shy was an issue or it sounds as if you're, you were going to relocate the Billerica operation to wherever the new place?
Some of the complications that we have with our current Billerica facilities, we have a lease. And today, we have the, the whole company is located there. We don't have any manufacturing operations. It's all engineering and some of the manufacturing support. But we would look for this, the Nagog location to house the manufacturing facility itself. And then if need be, we could keep, you know, portion of the people back in Billerica without. And that's somewhat up in flux as we continue to plan for this, for this change. You want to?
And the goal, longer term, and longer term's not as long-term as people may be thinking. You saw the 30% growth here. And the exciting thing about PepsiCo, or coming from PepsiCo to Insulet is the growth here and the number of potential patients, future growth. That's our future growth maybe. And one of the things that excites us about the Acton facility here in Nagog Park is expansion capability. We also have a distribution center in Bedford. That ideal situation, everything would be under one roof. And so if and when we would expand for a third line and maybe potentially a fourth line that has two lines going into it is then we would like potentially to expand to 300,000. That's our future growth with our sales volume.
Okay.
Just if I could make a comment on that. One of the things that I failed to bring out is the growth trajectory of the company. I mean, today, we're about 600 people. If you look at our five-year strategic plan, we're going to be up close to 1,500 people. We expect to be a billion-dollar company in revenue in five years. Not only in diabetes, but we have some very exciting product opportunities in delivering other pharmaceutical drugs for patients. In fact, in fact, if you watch TV in Boston, the news, there's an add-on by Angen for the Nulasta product, which is a product that is used to provide a delivery device for Nulasta, which is a drug for patients who have gone through chemotherapy and it raises their white blood cells. You'll see it on the ads. It's two women and they're actually wearing it on their body. I actually have a Nulasta device. It's an agreement we have with Angen. We're going to generate probably 60 million dollars this year in drug delivery, which is another avenue of growth for the business. But we expect to be a very hyper, high-growth company because of the exciting technology we bring to the medical marketplace. So expansion plans, I was in, we were, I was in four different facilities over my tenure, growing a business from zero to 750 million in revenue. I see the same growth trajectory here. So we would continue to expand.
I have to say that I, before you mentioned that you were publicly traded, I had looked you up and found out you were traded on Nasdaq. I also was looking at Forbes and Motley Fool, among other things, have various resources giving you high marks, talking about you were having some sort of development contract with Eli Lilly and you also, Forbes also, it's 2014, as you ranked you, number four of the most innovative companies in the country or something like that. So I was really excited about it. I also, in my life, I remember when I was a kid, there was a boy in my neighborhood, very athletic, but he had type 1 diabetes. And I don't know how they managed. I know his mother had to give him injections periodically and he was just, I always wonder what happened to him because he was such a healthy kid and he just had this thing called diabetes for which he needed a shot periodically.
Six times a day.
Yeah, and it, you know, he really could have used something like this. It sounds perfect. One last question. This is courtesy of our water district because they do like to know when businesses are coming into town. Do you have any sense of how much water, what your demand for water supply might be?
I don't, I'm not sure that manufacturing operations takes any water, but.
Already talked about this with the town and we did our research and followed up. There is no water used in processing of the pod or in the manufacturing process. So as it was explained to us from the folks, as we followed up from the town, it would be the number of flushes, as they call it. I learned more about how many flushes per employee in an office. So there was more than enough capacity for the number of folks that were talking for the.
They have those advanced toilets too now.
That's how it was described, so I'm using exact terms.
And a lot of us just don't bother, just take the foolproof way. So, okay, well, thank you very much. I'm very interested and excited to hear about this and I, you know, I think I would like our town to sort of pursue it a little further. So, thank you.
Katie?
Thank you for coming tonight. Also excited to hear about this and I know Ben and the Life Sciences Center are going to be the ones to sell you on the fact that, and as you know, Massachusetts is the, you know, sort of world of life sciences. So there's a lot that we bring here. And I think moving that even further out, more outside of 95 is really exciting and needs to happen. So I'm excited to see more companies come out here. In my daytime life, I work with the Mass Tech Collaborative and the Economic Development Agency for Massachusetts and we do sort of the digital health and Life Sciences Center does the life sciences part of this, although there's a lot of overlap there. And, you know, in thinking about growing digital health here, it's also, I'm pushy a lot and want to see us growing more, you know, not just in Boston and really thinking about outside. So I appreciate you doing that and coming here. I had a question about, and it gets a little bit to Franny's transportation question, but where do most of your employees live right now? Are they mostly around Billerica or are they in the Boston area?
We've done, we've done an analysis of that. The majority of our people live in and around the Billerica area, probably within 20 miles or so. I live in Sud, I'm very common. I live in Sudbury. Mike lives in Lexington.
So most people drive to work?
Most people drive to work.
Okay. And then in terms of, you know, this sort of accelerated timeline that you have, just thinking through if we do talk about and move forward with a TIF or something like that, just the timing of that, have you thought through how that might work considering that it has to get a town meeting approval and we don't have a town meeting until the beginning of April? About whether that works within sort of your timeline of trying to buy something by the end of this year?
You want to take that one out?
Hi, Steve Currie with Grant Thornton. We talked about timing at the meeting about a week and a half ago. We did talk about the meeting that had occurred just recently.
Yeah.
And the process of looking at a facility and doing LOI, having a contingent upon incentives, if they go that route. But the purchase and acquisition would have to come before April.
Right.
So we would have to go in with some sort of formal understanding that the overall incentive would be offered and accepted and then go through the approval process.
Yeah, I mean, we, you know, we can't bind anything outside of town meeting. You know, we can tell you what the board might support or not, but knowing that, you know, it's not binding unless town meeting approves it. So just, you know, again, we'd be very excited to have you here, but just as a, something to kind of keep it in your mind that that is.
Understood. And is there any way for a special town meeting? Okay.
We'd have to discuss that.
Sure.
We have another board, the finance committee, that's not a big fan of specials, but.
We've had a lot of specials in the last year, so I don't know, I honestly don't know how that would go or how that would help or hurt your costs.
But I think that's something we can certainly talk about and be part of the negotiation process.
And we didn't talk about that a week ago.
Right, okay, good. And then my question was, are you going to be reshoring all of the manufacturing jobs from China or are some of them still going to be over there?
We are not, we are not bringing manufacturing from China to here. We are simply expanding our capacity.
So you'll keep some manufacturing there as well?
Yeah, based, we have a, we have a long-term arrangement in China. There's an opportunity for us to reduce the amount of output from our Chinese facility.
Okay.
And quite frankly, from a redundancy standpoint and business continuity, it's very important, particularly with this type of device, to have redundancy around the world.
Sure.
Because you can't have all your eggs in one basket. If something disastrous happens either here or in China, you really don't want to be in that position. So this would be a second facility in the, located in the US. And we would probably bring volume back to the US. Right now, we have four lines in China and there's opportunities to bring more here and bring it up and down. But we would keep the facility in China for redundancies, redundancy purposes.
And how many of the jobs here do you anticipate would be manufacturing jobs?
Chuck, would you say? What?
Yeah, it depends on the organization of the equipment.
Half of the thousand that you'll get to or?
Well, no, five hundred or more, half of the 500 of the new jobs.
Okay.
That plus.
Right.
Still designing the automation as we speak. Last year, we hired one and a half people per day. As our HR folks tell us. So we're still hiring. We just made an offer today for one of the engineers.
Probably half, you know. And many of those very skilled individuals with, you know, engineering background or very technical expertise in electrical, mechanical, software, automation techniques and.
Do you partner with any of the community colleges? And I know some of them have manufacturing programs that work closely with businesses to train these people.
A program that, we have a group of interns that come into the company that are engineering. I'm trying to remember whether that's.
MIT, we have a number of interns here who are just in the project.
Right.
Health and industrial designers.
Okay.
Intern programs with some of the local schools.
Yeah, and I'd encourage you too to think, you know, if you're moving towards the skilled manufacturing as well as the, not just sort of our, we have the great high-end colleges as well, but also some really good community colleges that do a lot of that work with specific programs.
We haven't had a need yet, but we're sort of planning for it, absolutely.
Great. No, I'm excited about it and hopefully we can, you know, talk more about what numbers and things would be and timing and figure out.
All the details.
Exactly, yes, that's the easy part.
Okay, I'm also excited to hear your presentation. I think it's a good sign of the economy finally starting to come back. I mean, I understand you have a unique company, but Nagog has been a lot of empty storefronts, you know, for the last few years. I think if your company was able to come in here, a lot of those would fill up with the numbers of employees you're talking about who would be patronizing local businesses. So everywhere I go, I'm seeing signs for hiring and I'm particularly impressed that you can create manufacturing jobs and compete with China and be able to make money doing that, especially with the salaries and compensation you're talking about. On the transportation, traffic is always an issue. I mean, you're talking about a lot of employees. 2A is pretty congested a lot of times. We worked very hard to build a new train station, which is a jewel in the town now. And the MBTA has responded by creating this reverse commute out from Boston. So to the extent you could sell. So, to the extent you could sell jobs to people who might want to live in Boston, they could commute out from Boston. The train schedules in the morning have been beefed up to allow, particularly going out to Devon's, they're interested in drawing people out from Boston. And then, we would have a shuttle. We have a shuttle that operates from the train station to Nagog Park every day. So, anything, any of your thinking you could do about using mass transportation, cut down on the traffic?
Absolutely.
I think would be very helpful to the town and to your employees as well. This, I just have questions about how this actually works, just for my own information. It looks like a syringe with a needle here. Do you actually, is, how does it get into your bloodstream? Is it actually an injection that...
So, this little syringe that you sit, that's in that little package, is simply used to take insulin out of the vial. So, the patient goes to the drugstore and gets a little vial of insulin. This is used to basically extract 200 units of insulin. And then, on the very back of this device, there's a mirror and you basically put insulin in with your device. So, this now contains 200 units of insulin. So, all of the insulin and whatever else you carry in a person's pump is now on body. So, this has been put on the person's body. And a very innovative technology, it's a legal mechanism, but actually...
So, if you're just doing it, like, oh, it doesn't talk TV. Audience will...
I've always wanted to be on TV.
You can watch the tape of this.
Brave. And I'll see all the things I did wrong. But basically, after you put the insulin in this device, you use this handheld wireless device that basically communicates with this, with your little Omnipod on your arm. And a very small needle deploys into your skin and then leaves behind a very small cannula or basically a plastic tube that delivers the insulin to the body through that plastic tube. You don't even, it feels like a mosquito bite when the little needle goes in. So, many people who are getting six shots a day have needle phobia or have pain associated with that. You don't, you hardly feel when the needle goes into your body. And then, it stays there for three days. So, you don't feel, there's no pain. And in fact, all of us have worn it, although we don't have diabetes, we've worn this device and used saline to put into our body to understand how it works and how it feels. I forgot it was on after the first day I was wearing it. I came home, my wife said, "What the hell is, what do you have on your arm?" I said, "I forgot." I had the Omnipod on my arm. And after three days, you take it off and throw it away. But the freedom, and what's so exciting about this technology is that it really is in its infancy, but the freedom that this gives patients is just remarkable. We've had kids come to the company and people that are using the product, and to hear them tell their stories is just remarkable because they're doing things that they never thought that they would be able to do because they were otherwise going to be pulling around with them 42 inches of tubing. That gets caught in car doors. I was out at one physician's office and a patient was wearing their tube pump at night and the dog ate the tubes, caused alarms to go off and other things because these patients, what happens if they go, if they give themselves too much insulin, they can go into hypoglycemia, they can go into a coma. So, it's really a life-saving and something that keeps these patients alive, but it's very remarkable, the adoption and the people that are very excited about this product. And we are just equally excited about what we're bringing to diabetes patients, making their life a little bit easier every day, which is really fulfilling for us.
That's amazing technology and very exciting. Getting back to your employees, you heard some discussion tonight about Men and Man Tech, which is our local technical school. They're going to be building an entire new school. They revised their curriculum, although they'll still be providing, you know, courses in carpentry and baking and those kind of things. There are going to be a lot more high-tech courses and welding with using, you know, new special equipment and those kind of things. You anticipate having jobs for less than high school graduate engineers in software development?
Absolutely. All the things you described. We use very sophisticated laser welding techniques and applying the plastics of this device together, very sophisticated inspection techniques, camera optics technology, software technology. There's tremendous amount of need for us to have a very educated and technical employee base.
And actually, one of the things we keep hearing, particularly from the Baker administration, is there are not enough people trained in those type of skills to, that employers can find. Have you been able to find enough workers who have those skills?
Yes. And one of the reasons, you know, as you mentioned, Massachusetts is sort of the poster child for the country, right, in terms of the infrastructure that's been built here with the academic centers of MIT, Harvard and others, and on the technical side as well, that really makes this an ideal place to recruit for those type of people.
Okay. Thank you very much. I think Franny had another question.
You said you get this totally clean without water. And I was thinking, how do you clean it? And I figured it's heat or chemicals. So, my question is about what's the output, like, what's the pollution risk from what you're doing?
There isn't any, I mean, there's no pollution other than, we bring parts in. So, the parts are fabricated. We have 72 component parts. But we manufacture in what's called a clean room environment. And what that means is that the air that's in that contained space like this would be, would be totally contained. It would have special HEPA filters that would basically process the air and keep the particular level below 1/100,000. So, it's called a Class 100,000 clean room. So, the people that are in that facility all wear bonnets on their head. They wore glasses, booties and complete manufacturing garb that is, and when you walk in and out of this clean room, it has a positive air inside that pushes anything else. There's, on the floor, you have things that catch any contamination that may be on your feet. So, it's not water or anything cleaning this device. It's the clean room or the environment in which it's manufactured.
Send it to a sterilizer.
And then, we send it to a sterilizer. So, it's very, very clean.
So, it's sterilized with heat, is it? Or...
It's partly heat, but we use ethylene oxide, essentially a very common sterilization technique. And then, that's in New York. So, we don't sterilize at our manufacturing facility. We send that out to a special location.
Oh, okay. Okay. Thanks.
Okay. I don't see anyone with any further questions. And from what I'm hearing, it's kind of unanimous consent to... Oh, okay. Was any, any citizens who have any questions about this proposal?
Do you know of JDRF?
I do know JDRF.
Is this something from JD? Are you, that's the Juvenile Diabetes...
Research Foundation.
Research Foundation.
Ann, can you identify yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Ann Chang, and I live in South Akron. Sorry about that. So, is this one of their, are you in any way connected with them or...
So, JDRF is a very strong advocacy group for people with type one diabetes and type two diabetes. We have a...
Just type one?
We have a relationship with them. And I know Derek Rapp, the president, very, very well. We don't have a formal R and D relationship with them in that sense, but we have a very close working relationship.
Okay. My grandson has a pump, which is, stays. This is only good for three days. Is it covered by insurance? And how much is about, approximately, how much is it? Approximately, I mean, please.
So, this is for three days and it is broadly covered by most insurance plans across the United States. And it's about the same price or cost as you would have on a conventional insulin pump. So, it's about the same as a Medtronic or any other device that's used that has a device on your belt. And then, the supplies that go along with it, the infusion sets, about the same price or cost per patient.
I just wanted to know, then again, what you want from the town as far as a TIF or something like that?
We're going to be negotiating that, Ann. We're not negotiating it here tonight.
All right. No, I just, okay, sorry about that. And, well, I just thought that since we have 60 days to vote against Belmont, because of course, we're going to vote against Belmont so they can't leave, we could have a town meeting for this as well.
It generally is similar to the town meeting vote to accept the other manufacturing, pardon me? We did a specialist tax assessment. Yeah. What was the name of that company? AES. AES came to town. Is it basically tax, real estate tax relief?
I can go. Hi, Deborah Symes, Concord Road. I have a couple of questions and a couple of thoughts. So, three days, that was one of my questions. So, after the three days, the user chucks this in the trash? Is that what happens? I'm sorry?
Work and recycle.
Oh, so that is my question. In part, like, so it's clearly mostly plastics, right? Okay. What, which plastics are in use? What kind are they? Ha, ha, ha.
I recycle at Sudbury. I know one, two, and I know all the others. I don't know why this would be classified. I don't.
Does anybody? I'm asking...
It's all biodegradable?
No, no plastics are biodegradable. So, okay, so what hap, how are you getting people, how are you getting users actually to recycle these gizmos?
We have an outside facility that does it for us.
So, how does the user, and what's the participation rate in that? Okay.
I'm not, I don't have the latest and greatest participation rate, but I know, I know that we do offer recycling for patients.
Yeah.
They can send their pods back to us and we will provide them to our outside service provider that does it for us.
Okay.
I just don't know off the top of my head what the participation, I can find out.
Also, I just want to say, do a plug for UMass Lowell, which has other Mesa Fabulous programs. You might want to know about them. Okay, that's that.
We have a lot of UMass Lowell graduates that work for it.
Oh, you do?
Yes.
Let's see, components, da, da, da. Oh, and then, one other question is, contrary to what I'm seeing, I want you to tell me that you have women in upper management. Please, tell me that.
They sent the old guys out tonight. Yes, our president, our president of our diabetes products, which I have diabetes, which is the blind share, is a very, a woman who's been working with us for two years as our chief commercial officer, or as our president, actually, of our diabetes products. And my head of investor relations, who's also on my staff, is a woman. Oh, yes, we just hired a new medical director, Dr. Trang Lai, who's a female, came from Stanford University. And we have a, we are very cognizant of the need for women executives in management.
Good to know. All right. And then, I need to use this to tell them something. Thank you.
I'm not going to fight you over that.
Okay. So, a couple of quick thoughts when you guys are talking about whatever the town mayor may not want to do. One is to think about, I don't know what this means, but, you know, local hiring, like, how can we actually get local folks hired? And the other thing that just occurred to me is, I assume there wouldn't be any reason that this company wouldn't be eligible to participate in the CCA program. So, if that were the, right?
What program?
The CC, the Community Choice Aggregation Program that's developing, sorry. Acronyms, blah, blah, blah.
They would be eligible, but it's my understanding, and we can clarify this offline or, you know, in our meeting. We have a meeting coming up. I think the larger companies in town find it more advantageous to make their own deals with the electric utilities than join the aggregate program, but that's my understanding. I mean, they would be eligible, but depending on their usage, they could negotiate their own rates.
They could, certainly. But what I'm suggesting is the town may want to encourage them to participate. That's all. Thank you.
Derek Chen, Heel Road. Can I ask questions about finance?
With understanding that we just started a meeting with these gentlemen a few weeks ago. The state, state has an office that encourages biotech companies to locate in Massachusetts. So, they're talking to the state about state tax breaks. They just have started opening negotiations about what the town might agree or what they might be asking for. So, we're not going to get into any details about actual numbers tonight.
Well, I just want to make the comment that according to the annual report, the last three years, net losses were 45 million, 51 million, and some to 3 million ending December 31st. They've accumulated $650 million in losses since, I guess, they started in 2000. The question is, is this pod which was introduced supposedly, the Omnipod system came out in 2005, and it's been 11 years before it's starting to take off? Just thought I'd mention that.
I would make a comment on that. This product did come to market, was first approved by the FDA in 2005. A new version of this device came out in 2013, which is this smaller profile device. And there were a number of reasons why there were impediments to this new technology, the least, not least, the least of which is that we, even today, don't have Medicare reimbursement. So, for any patient over the age of 65, the U.S. government will provide for them to have a tubed pump, Medtronic or others, but will not provide insurance reimbursement for this device, even though it does the same thing. That is my number one priority of, as CEO, to get Medicare reimbursement, but that's one of the major reasons why we've had, not had more widespread adoption. And I would also say that before, if you look at our net losses, so the company was founded back in 2005, the company today has net losses of around $700 million. We have not yet turned profitable. We are very much on the cusp of that. You know, the growth prospects, we think we're going to, we're going to do around $350 million in revenue for 2016. And we see a clear line of sight to improving our gross profit margins as well as becoming profitable. So, I don't think that's, sustainability is not an issue at all. We just raised $300 million in a convertible offering to allow us to make some of these manufacturing investments. But it's been a long road with this technology. And even with its great promise, there's been a lot of hard work to bring it to fruition. I think we've got, now have the team in place to make that happen. And with your support, I think we can, we can really build a substantial medical device company in Massachusetts. So, thank you.
All right. Seeing no more members of the public to speak to this issue, again, I hear kind of unanimous support from the selectmen. I'm not, I don't think we need a vote on this. We just need to authorize the town manager to continue with these negotiations and continue to keep reporting back to us as they progress. Without objection, we'll send that message. Thank you. It's eight o'clock and the next item on the agenda is a public forum about the Morrison Farmhouse, future plans. And let me open this before we turn it over to the public to see if any members of this board have any thing they want to say before the public's allowed to comment. Franny?
Well, it was interesting going through all of the materials. And if I had to say my gut reaction, first of all, I was surprised to see that I had said, "Yeah, knock it down," at one of the meetings. There were some notes from some past meeting where we were hearing all these people from some committee talking about the reasons it wasn't financially viable to put housing there and why we shouldn't. And it said, you know, Ms. Osman said, "Yeah," she could see that. But after reading all the things and thinking about it and hearing things for months, I don't feel that way anymore. I actually, I get excited about this idea of it being an educational farm. And sometimes I find that we bring things to town meeting and they don't go over and people get discouraged. I'm thinking specifically about the last Morrison plan that came. And just like the senior center, sometimes things come to town meeting and it's due to the details of it and the timing and not necessarily that it wasn't good to have a plan. And I sort of would like to see us try to develop another plan. I don't want to give up. I do see a general consensus. There doesn't seem to be a lot of desire to have a sold house there, but I don't want to give up on the question of rental through the Housing Authority. But more interesting to me are these suggestions of making it some kind of farm that has educational options for, you know, youth and people with developmental disabilities and the horticultural therapy. That just all sounds very exciting. And when I look around at what we have, I don't think we have an educational farm in Acton. I mean, yes, there are them in Massachusetts, and there are farms like Gaining Ground and Concord, which are a community farm, and it is creating food for food pantries. But I think we have room and energy for that in Acton. It was very interesting to read all the articles, I mean, the letters. There's one additional letter that I want to read from the Commission on Disabilities, because it just came in, even though they voted on it at their last meeting. So I figured I'd share it. The Acton Commission on Disabilities discussed the matter of the Morrison Farm structures and concluded that it would be a benefit for people with disabilities and many others if the property contained handicapped accessible bathrooms and a space to conduct horticultural therapy for people with mental disabilities. Raised gardening beds have now been built in the Morrison Farm Community Garden, which provides access to gardening for people who use wheelchairs. I'm not sure if that actually, if they were already built, but at least they were funded, I think, through the Rite, the Reducing Isolation Project that the Health Department got funding for. We should be proud of the completion of this project, which keeps Acton on the path towards being consistent with our Acton 2020 goal of being a fully inclusive community. The Commission on Disabilities sees the lack of handicapped accessible restrooms at Morrison Farm as a missing component and feels that handicapped accessible bathrooms should be included in any plan to make changes at the farm. In addition, we feel the town needs to do more to provide a variety of services for individuals with mental disabilities, such as a space to engage in horticultural therapy, an idea that has been spearheaded and embraced by the Acton Recreation Department. Thank you for the opportunity to provide comments. Acton Commission on Disabilities. In general, with Bruce Freeman rail trail there, with the conservation land, with the, it seems like it would be a great, with all the farming activities. I would like to see consideration of the first floor of that being somehow sink kitchen space and bathrooms, you know, so that we could use the land. But I also like the idea of the housing. I don't mind it being moved, but I don't really see that I want to knock it down.
If you have a comment now, or if you just want to wait until we hear from the citizens or anything?
Yeah, I'll be quick, because I think that there are people in the audience who would like to speak, and maybe they add to what they've already submitted to us in writing. But I, I would say, based on, on everything that's been submitted, that we're, we're not going to make a decision tonight about what's going to happen to the house, because I think that although there are a fair number of comments from committees saying that the house should be demolished, I, I've been on this committee long enough and actually have been aware of what's been going on with the Morrison Farms since 2007, when I was actually on the Conservation Commission, and there was the Morrison Farm Reuse Committee, which at that time was considering the use of, of the land for, for playing fields, among other things. And at that point, there was a real strong sense on the Board of Selectmen that the house should be preserved. And subsequent actions since I've been on the board have sort of enhanced that position, that it should be preserved. At one point, we started to talk about, well, what are we going to do with the house to make it really habitable without having to spend a lot more money? And that's when this idea of having Habitat come in, take the house off our hands and, and overhaul it at no cost to us, and then make it available for somebody who was qualified for affordable housing came up, and it seemed very appealing. And that's when we started to hear that people thought that we shouldn't sell the house lot. We shouldn't separate that part of the property from the rest of the property. And then the idea of demolishing the house came up. I, I have mixed feelings. I happen to respect the preservation of open space, but having just written or drafted the letter from the board about the Martin Street project and emphasized that historical preservation and open space preservation are very important to people in this community, I think that there is an element of this property where historic preservation is important. And, and I don't want that to be lost in the mix, and it includes dealing with the house. So I, making the existing structures accessible, especially the house, is something that came up in the past when we were talking about making it a town office. And it just, I think people realized that it would be terribly expensive and complicated. And so that was, that idea sort of was set aside for some other discussion. But anyhow, I would like to hear what people in the audience have to say, just to add to my complete confusion about what to do about this. Thank you.
Katie?
Sure. I'll reserve some, most of my comments until after we hear from the public, although we have had a number of emails and obviously a lot of information that, that was in our packet. I will, I, because I don't think the Historical Commission was able to get their letter in on time, but at their meeting on Wednesday, they did discuss Morrison Farmhouse and agree that they are recommending preserving the farmhouse, and they would recommend probably moving it closer to Bruce Freeman rail trail and having historic displays from the Historical Society in the bottom, including maybe some staffing from the Historical Society, and using CPA funds to promote, you know, to, to fund, to fund this. But again, with, with an emphasis on, on preserving the, the building. It's a bit frustrating, because we've talked about this in a number of public forums. While some people don't feel that that's true, we have. And we have discussed this at a number of our meetings, and what we keep doing at our meetings is just saying what we can't come to a decision and pushing it off and off and off, and the house just sits and sits and sits. And eventually, it will, you know, it will be demolished by neglect, and that's not what we want. We need to come up with a decision, and we need to do that soon. And that was what we had discussed, what we were going to do at this meeting. And I understand that that's not what's going to happen, because we don't have, we've had a lot of proposals. Unfortunately, those proposals do not include specific numbers about how much various options would cost or what the, you know, financing options for those are. Some things could be eligible potentially for CPA money, some probably can't. I think there's a general, we could potentially come to a general consensus about whether or not we want to carve that lot out for, for private residents or not. My personal opinion is, I don't like that idea. But I do think that there are other ways to preserve the house. But if we're not going to come to a decision tonight, then we need to come up with a plan of action to get to an actual decision, because otherwise, we're never going to get there. And we have a Morrison Farm Committee, they are specific, they are not focused on the house. They, they did provide comments, as, as other boards did, and whether that means we need another committee or something to do with the house, but we need some way to do this, because otherwise, it's, it's not happening, and it hasn't. I mean, we talked about this and set this agreement back when I was chair of this board. And so it's been a long time that we've had an agreement that we're going to come to a decision. And yet, every time we say we're going to come to a decision, we don't. So I understand that it's going to be controversial, whatever, because we're going to hear from a lot of people who are either going to say, "Tear it down, make it community gardens, make it, you know, affordable housing, just save it, and I don't care what you do with it," whatever. There's going to be a lot of that tonight. And so whatever we decide is going to make a group of people more angry. But that's our role, and eventually, we're going to have to do that. So my only request tonight is that after we hear proposals, whether we say, yes, you know, I think we need to come to a general consensus of, yes, we think it should be torn down, yes, we think we should save it, or, you know, yes, we think it should be for, you know, we agree with carving out a private lot or not. I think we need to kind of come to a general agreement on those three questions. And then, depending on what those answers are, figure out how we're getting to next steps. Because either, if not, we're just continuing to spin our wheels. And I don't think that that's, I don't, I don't think that that's what we should do.
Okay, first, let me ask Shannon to make sure that the letter from the Disability Commission gets into the Morrison Farm 2016 packet. Also, if, if comments come in from the Historical Commission, anything that comes in, Lisa's been putting them into the packet. We tried to put together all the information we had from the last 20 years of Morrison Farm, since the town purchased it in 1979, I believe it was.
Ninety-six.
Oh, 97, I'm sorry, 97, okay. That's almost 20, that is 20 years, almost, so, okay. 97, it was 89 when it was last used, the farmhouse, I saw. And I agree basically with Katie. I mean, I see, I see the purpose of this meeting to finally come to make some decision, because no decision is a decision, and if we don't make any decision, it'll sit there and deteriorate for the next 20 years and be an eyesore to the neighborhood and eventually fall down on its own power. So I think that whatever decision, and I'm not sure we're going to, we're clearly not going to make anything tonight, but we need some process to get there. If it involves any money, which includes, I think, enough money for demolishing, just demolishing the structure, or I, is probably going to be, have to be put in next year's budget, we'll need a town meeting vote on this. If it includes moving it, if it includes renting it, if it includes rehabbing it for affordable housing, maybe CPC, a CPC plan, but that has to go to town meeting also. So we processed the thing to death so far. We need to make some decision. So with that, let me throw it open to the general public.
I don't know if it's wise to go first, but, Deborah Seibers, Concord Road. So I've been paying attention to this, in part because I'm in a butter, and in part because I care about agriculture and all those lovely things, since Walter was chairing the reuse committee, and I used to come to all those meetings, whatever. The first thing I want to say is that it has been maddeningly hard, and this really probably, Steve, is for you. It's been maddeningly hard to get information about the current committee's, what's going on. I have looked for minutes, I can't find any. So I've been trying a little bit to stay abreast, and it has been really frustrating, so I wish if that were different.
I can say, as the liaison for the current Morrison Farm Committee, that they haven't met on a frequent basis. I think our last meeting was in maybe January, so it's not, it's not as though there've been a number of meetings going on.
Right, but the most recent thing I could find was 2013.
All right, well, we have met since then.
Good, okay. So I guess a couple of things. One is, I would really not like, this is about the house particularly, I would really not like to see the house separated from its sort of, you know, physical site. It's the agricultural legacy that it represents. I do feel like the historical piece is an important one. I have been saying this since we were even talking about buying this thing, and I'll just say it again here, which is, I'm glad that there are agricultural uses happening on the property right now. I think as our planet heats up and the Colorado River dries up and we have massive droughts in the Southwest, we are going to need to become more food self-sufficient. That's why the Massachusetts Food Plan folks are looking at how we can get more food self-sufficient over the coming couple of decades, coming few decades. I would not like to see any of the land actually go out of any, go out of agricultural uses. I would love to, you know, ultimately, my pipe dream is we have an Acton community farm, or we, one of the existing community farms comes in and makes us another satellite site at Morrison, at Coetland, eventually, wherever. I would like to see us be forward-looking in terms of being able to produce food in our town. And just as an addendum to that, I think that, you know, if we can manage, if we can swing it financially to make bathrooms available to people who are using the property and the adjacent properties in whatever way is a great idea, if we can afford it. In the long haul, I will say that one of the big obstacles for, for community-based farming is always housing for the farm manager, because you typically can't pay the farm manager enough that he or she can afford, you know, decent housing as well. So one of the perks that towns sometimes look at is, hey, we can provide you housing. It's always been my thought that that would be a great, a great use for that. You know, if we needed to, to do other things in the shorter term until we're in that other position, great. Just thought I'd share my pipe dream, thank you.
Hi, I'm Carolyn Reed. I'm with Habitat for Humanity North Central Mass, with offices at 138 Great Road here in Acton. And I just want to put my two cents in. It is a property that Habitat is very interested in. We currently have a list of 49 families interested in affordable housing in this area. Our next build is another single family. We see a definite lack of affordable housing throughout this region, but particularly in towns that could be commuter towns into Boston. We generally serve families that make 30% to 60% of area median income, and those families don't have options in many of the towns in North Central Massachusetts, so this would be an option. And for me personally, as an advocate for affordable housing, to see a house that's in great shape and would be wonderful for a family, torn down seems like a shame. With all those families waiting for a home, and these are hard-working families, living in places that don't satisfy their needs right now, that need a home. Thank you.
Good evening, members. Walter Foster, 3 Jesse Drive. So thank you for, again, putting this on the agenda and opening your hearts and minds to what is a very, very long process. And as Janet mentioned, and as Deborah did, the, the first, or at least one of the reuse committees that I helped to chair for two and a half years of my life began in 2004. So it's a very near and dearly held issue for me, that I felt I've, I've dedicated a lot of years to, and my comments fall along the, along the following. So first and foremost is, of course, I know you have in your materials our lovely book that we wrote, and it's like my best published work with everybody else on the committee, and I really recommend it. It's got such a great, it was a really great, at least, coalition of information. A couple of things that, in, in effect, what has really happened is that, and I can put myself as one of the many responsible for this, is having sat on where you sat many years before, is essentially, this, this piece of property's been piecemealed. So every attempt with the larger kind of holistic view has not happened. In fact, there was this incredibly ambitious that would have had, by 2012, all of the items discussed in this 2007 one taken care of. But I will say this, that, and I'm sorry, this is a very long preference to my comments, but the practical side is, is that in fact, the town has begun to implement many of the recommendations. So let me just go over just a few, and they really actually were prioritized after that time, which was, like you are doing now, a very open and long, and I think solicitous process for people in the town. And the first, of course, is the agricultural heritage. So my comment about this is, this is one of the most important historical agricultural pieces of land. You cannot sever off this property, this house from this land. You cannot separate it out, it's an integral part of this land. So out of all the places, and whatever you might want to do with it, do not carve up this land in any way, shape, or form. And I also believe that that's consistent with the political will, for those of us who actually voted at that meeting, and many here did. But the political will behind that was to purchase this, and this is really, it's kind of a centerpiece property. We have lots of great properties, conservation land and open space, that every year, a book is produced with these wonderful paths, but you kind of have to ferret them out. Many of them, you really have to ferret them out, where to go. Morrison is by far, I think, one of the most visible, and it's also one of the most emblematic of the character of the town, that should be always accessible to everybody in Acton, both accessibility, whether you live right near it or you don't. And for that matter, that, that's been the whole thrust, not only behind the purchase of this property, but I think each of the Morrison Farm plans that have come forward is, how do we maximize the use for everybody? And one of those ways is not carving it out for, as, as wonderful as a family might be or for somebody else. And what I would propose to you, knowing, hearing the comments from tonight, that at the very least, you make that decision tonight. Decide not to split up this land, because it's a decision-making tree. The very next questions will then lead to practical financial ones that will, I think, very readily lead you down a road. But it is a decision you can make tonight to help push this forward. The second one was the Concord Road views, was to maintain those. And by doing that, again, not carving up this land and keeping it integral goes to that. The, one of the ones that has happened, actually, is not yet built, but is the trail network. So a CBC project was voted on, and the network to access, not only through Bruce Freeman, which is becoming a reality, literally being built before our eyes, but that will be connected by wonderful trails around that pond, are a reality. So we, we are moving forward, we're just really slow with our process, but that's a great piece of it. It's one that's consensus-built. At the time, we had the EAV Green, which is that little, like, kind of triangular piece near the depot house, that, that was a CPC project funded, but fell by the wayside because of various legal issues. But I know that that will happen too, like, that kind of space. The Bruce Freeman Rail Trail was the fourth rec- the fourth recommendation, and that's getting built. The Nishoba Brook Bridge, which will connect the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail with others. So you can continue to go down the list, and not everything, of course, has been adopted, and there's definitely been changes, as we have seen. But the one thing that I think I can share with you tonight that I think emerges from all of this long history, is you cannot sever out this house. And once you decide to do that, then there's really very, very set practical concerns, but now you've limited out what the possible uses are without revisiting it. This committee, with all due respect, cannot continue to open up that dialogue to another new committee that meets or whatever. I really urge you to kind of begin to go down that path and implement some of the other broader perspectives. I'm sure that there's lots of people here that want to weigh in on that, but I know, Franny, from what you said, the entire vision of this first original plan was that educational farm. And of course, part of that, and even the second plan that came up, was really to implement that part of it. And what I loved about those parts was the holistic approach, that everybody of every age and every kind of ability could kind of participate in that. So, and of course, that agricultural use has continued. There's a few others that have emerged as well, but, you know, once you make some of the decisions, particularly about the house and the barn, you're really going to be sad about your uses. So hopefully, you can come to, hopefully, some conclusions tonight, or begin to push that ball forward. Thank you for listening.
Let me just ask you a question, Walter. We had one suggestion, it might have been the cemetery commission, that the house be moved down by the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, used for other. You talk about segregating out the property, that, there's another proposal to, you know, build the affordable housing, which we require rezoning it and actually cutting out and selling the piece of property. Do you also feel the same way about moving the house?
You know, I guess I'm a bit agnostic about moving the house in this regard. If you move the house, the house is preserved just somewhere else, and that happened back in the colonial days to the 17 and the 1800s. So from my perspective, opening up that land, and particularly what we had real difficulty was, was access. About kind of, and I know it's an ugly word for a beautiful space, but parking, or how do you access? So personally, and obviously just speaking for myself, if that house was preserved somewhere else, I think you achieved the historical goal, but you also are not severing off the piece of land that it sits on. And I think that kind of a change to the demographic is acceptable, and may give you, you know, some ways to work things out. So that's a real possibility. I mean, to me, it would have the same thing of keeping that land integral in one piece. Great, thank you.
Hi, Bob Van Meter, 2 Half Moon Hill. I'd like to, a member of the Acton Community Housing Corporation, and I'd like to speak in favor of the house being turned over to Habitat for Humanity and providing an affordable home for a family. I think there's so many times when I come to meetings in this town and hear reasons why we can't do affordable housing on this site or that site, and it's hard to understand why one corner of this site cannot be separated and made into an affordable home. Thanks.
Anyone else wish to speak to the issue?
Hi, David Hahn. I'm here from the Historic District Commission. I just want to check that two letters we sent in, in 2013 are in the packet, 21st of January 2013, and 25th of February 2013, which essentially, I won't repeat our views here, but essentially those two letters summarize, although we have no jurisdiction, of course, we did come up with an opinion about what we would like, and pointed out some issues with CPC monies and so forth. So I just want to verify that those are in the packet. I didn't get a chance to search through the documents, but...
I think at least one of them was, I don't...
Do you still have copies of...
I have them, I can give them to you, you know.
Yeah, why don't you email them, and then we'll make sure that they get in there, if they're not there already. I'm not sure whether they are or not.
Okay. And then, I'll just point out that one of the items in our letter was concerning CPC funding. As you know, if you get CPC funding, you have to use the Secretary of the Interior Standards, and there's really nothing in there that allows a demolition. You know, you can't accept CPC money and then go and demolish a building, so you probably know that, but I'll just reiterate that. Lastly, something in the back of my mind sticks, that when Mr. Fenton had to make amends for his behavior, wasn't he supposed to renovate that house? And what happened to that? You know, I recall that he owed us $200,000 worth of work, and if that's true, why isn't the house completely renovated and somebody living there? So if you could answer that. Thank you.
Well, it was renovated, it wasn't 200,000, that was negotiated in lieu of litigation. I think it was more like, yeah, I don't remember what the number was.
More like 150.
I don't remember what the number was, it was a few years ago, but he did do some work inside.
Nobody's lived there since he did work, but he did do some work. There's more work that has to be done.
Yeah, one of the big concerns that the board had was, we originally were looking at 60,000 estimate to fix up the house, to make it habitable, and that turned out to be in excess of $100,000, mostly because of asbestos removal work that had to be done. So, yes?
Hi, Ann Forbes, 25 Martin Street. I won't reiterate my written comments that I sent in, because I sent you two already, but I did want to zero in on practical follow-up of some of the threads that, as people have mentioned, have carried through the years about the various priorities. I was struck especially by the letter that came in today referring to the gaining ground situation in Concord, which is a way certainly that was found to keep farming a piece of agricultural land in Concord when it came under town ownership. But the part that wasn't mentioned was the house that is associated with that land, which is the Thorough birthplace, and just how the situation was worked out. It's not exactly parallel to what we are facing with Morrison Farm, but there are many similarities. And I would urge you to, in whatever process you're going to set up to continue here, to really begin to investigate what other towns have done with the most similar types of properties that you can come up with. The combination of agricultural land and a historic house that end up being...
Pardon? I don't think it's an historic house. You can do your questions separately, Ann.
I sent you the Massachusetts Historical Commission National Register Eligibility Opinion on Morrison Farm, which clearly found it eligible for the National Register as a piece with the farmland and the buildings. You cannot really separate the significance of that farm if you take the buildings away. But that's a whole other, it's a whole other topic. What I want to raise here is the example with gaining ground, I believe it's nine acres of a town-owned parcel that is managed for farming under the Concord Natural Resources Commission, and the Thorough birthplace house on a small parcel of, I believe, 2.5 acres, that is also owned by the town and has been preserved for a variety of uses. In the process of looking at that, you need to clarify what the funding was. The house is fully handicapped, accessible. There are parts, various parts of the house are rented out for offices, and I believe that the people working the gaining ground acreage can use the handicap-accessible restrooms in the house. I can't explain too much more about the exact logistics of the situation, but this kind of comparison with what other towns have done, I don't believe has been really thoroughly investigated, and I hope that that's part of this process.
Okay, can I just ask you a question about the National Register? The form you gave us says it's eligible for National Register listing, I guess. That's the Mass Historical Commission's opinion. It's dated October 2008.
Yep.
How long does it take for whoever, at the federal level, puts things on the National Register to rule on these recommendations? It's almost 10 years later.
There's no application that's been worked up for the National Register. That is a statement of the significance of the property only. It doesn't put it on the National Register. It doesn't get a National Register nomination started. But when people say that a 1930s, our last depression-era intact farmstead is not important, you need to go out and get an official opinion of that kind. Thanks.
Anyone else have any comments?
Hi, Michaela Moran, 80 School Street. I am going to speak as a citizen remembering how we bought this parcel to begin with. Our, I think the town's goal in taking this parcel into our fold was to really preserve that farm. And by destroying the house, destroying the barn, making changes to the property itself, I think that we're not fulfilling our initial goal of preservation of such a homestead. So I would really encourage the town to find a way, perhaps by doing the lease farming, or by allowing the town to lease it to individuals who may need home at reduced rate, as a way for us to keep the place intact. It is a significant thing for the town. How many other farms like this do we have in town? None. It's time we recognize that almost 100 years have passed since it was built, and it needs to be recognized that our Great Depression was, did have significance for many, many of us, even into today. So, thank you.
I'm Mary Ann Ashton. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Morrison Farm Committee, which I think is probably about the fourth iteration of the Morrison Farm Committee, but someone can correct me. I appreciated Walter's perspective on things, because, as he says, this has been such an ongoing process. When our committee met last January to talk about this, I think the part we felt most strongly about was the idea that the land needed to be kept together, and that it should not be split off separately. I appreciate the comments about the farming significance, and would just remind all of you that, again, in a decision that was made somewhere between the Walter Foster Morrison Farm Committee and the current Morrison Farm Committee, we started doing community gardening on the most able-to-be-farmed land on there. And there is farming going on, it's just going on under the guise of 40 individual farmers, instead of one farmer producing one crop. So if you want to reconsider that, it will take, you know, a decision on your part about that. I think my biggest concern is that I would like to see the land kept altogether and have it be available and accessible to everyone. And if the selectmen feel that it's necessary to keep the house in its current spot, I hope you would at least consider a usage that is compatible with the other many uses that go on that property. So, you know, something that complements that and is not an additional new use. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Bill Mullin, and I'm Wilson Lane. I want to reinforce what Mary Ann and Walter have said, but, which is, we bought this land, and to sell it or give it away, I don't think would be a good idea. I, you know, we've always been sort of wagging the dog with the tail, and the house and the barn have been the tail. You know, we've got a pretty much universal view on what else to do with this land. And so, at the risk of, once again, opening up something, I just would like to remind you of one aspect of the plan that, when I was involved, that we tried to push, and perhaps would be a solution for all. And that is to broaden the scope of this. The constraint that we have right now with the house and the barn is that there's trying to get access. Well, if you eliminate that issue by perhaps pursuing the land swap idea of modest amount of land surrounding the Robbins Memorial, exchange land at the back of the property that is where the growth potential is for the cemetery, of an equal and perhaps more usable amount of cemetery land, you then, the whole issue goes away. The house is preserved, the barn is preserved, you have access that comes in to the left of the Robbins Memorial, you can build some sort of a structure at some point in time that fits whatever people's needs are, you can have handicapped accessible bathrooms, you can have a structure of your desire that would be in that space. The barn, the house, the land is all preserved, agriculture is preserved, and yet you create that access that everybody who, you know, when I was there from 1997 until now, was trying to do to create, so that people would understand the history of Robbins, the stone, the alarm stone, Ice House Pond, all the aspects. And that would prevent, create the access, some parking, a building, and then you leave intact, based upon the wisdom of the historical people in town to do what we want with the house. That was always our plan. Ran into some roadblocks by the unwillingness of the cemetery commissioners to discuss the land swap, and then that constrained the property on the left-hand side, then you started squeezing in uses in that constraint diagram. So I really like what Walter said. If you could make a decision tonight that the land that we bought should remain in whole, and then my advice would be to expand the scope, to relieve the constraint, to preserve the house, do what we have to do with the barn, and yet gain that access so that people can come in, use the property, use the land, the beauty, the meadows, the woods, the conservation area, the water, the farming, all in one plan that solves all of these problems. So that's my recommendation.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, I see no one else, so we'll turn it over to the selectmen.
Now, I just had a question. Could we hear from the staff what their images were? I mean, people keep referring to horticultural therapy, or raised bed gardens, or things. I mean, we, yeah, I suppose...
I don't know, Kathy, do you want to address what you presented in certain emails about the therapy, farming concept?
Good evening, I'm Kathy Fochman, the Recreation Director. In response to some of the suggestions made by citizens at large, I've had a long-held, I guess, desire to bring some educational and nature education to the property of Morrison Farm. Horticultural therapy is one way to deliver that. Another way is to start a camp program. A camp program that introduces nature programs... A camp program that introduces nature programs, nature exploration, something that's sorely lacking, I think, in today's society. A lot of children these days aren't in touch with nature. So at a very high level, I'm suggesting that we implement educational programs at Morrison that tap into both nature, horticulture, and agriculture.
So does the farmhouse figure into your plans without those activities?
I think that my concept was to develop a building that stood in for the barn. I did not have the farmhouse specifically in mind for that purpose. I'm thinking back to the Morrison Plan that was presented by the Morrison Committee to develop a larger building that would contain space for classrooms, bathroom facilities, kitchen facilities, general gathering.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Select Board. Katie?
Sure. So again, I don't think my position's changed too much. I think, you know, we're not going to come to a final decision about the use of the house, but I do want to answer, I think we need to answer certain questions tonight. And one of those is, do we think it's appropriate to cut off a portion of this land around the house and sell it? And I very strongly feel that it's not. I think we need to keep this land intact, and while I appreciate the need for affordable housing, this, having to do that by permanently selling the land here does not work to me, and I don't think it's the right choice. In terms of tearing it down or keeping it, I would lean towards preserving the house. And I think that there are some interesting ideas about how to do that, but we do need to think about a way to sort through those, figure out how much each of these ideas would cost, whether it's keeping it where it is, whether it's moving it, and rehabbing it for what? Is it rehabbing it for bathrooms? Is it rehabbing it to lease it? You know, I think there are some interesting options there, but we need to figure out how much those options would cost and then, and potential funding sources for those, and then talk about those specifically. So I think we do need to talk about how we would go about and who would go about doing that. But in terms of selling it, I think we should keep all of the land town-owned and not carve out a piece of it to sell and preserve the house in some fashion, but we need more numbers to do that.
Hi, Jenna.
Yeah, I, you know, I'm of mixed feelings because I really did appreciate Habitat's interest and offer to take over the house. But I think that based on the people who've spoken here, who have a lot of history with this property, I think that the consensus is to keep the parcel intact. I do not think there's consensus, however, about demolition of the house. I think that we really need to look at that a little more closely, what to do with the house and the barn, because we have not gotten any input about the barn. And frankly, I would really like to have, if we're going to keep these two structures, I would like to consider all possible ideas on how to, you know, use them in a way that it's not going to be hideously expensive for the town. And I would love to be able to have the barn, a barn, something that is actually one that people could go into. I like Kathy's idea of education on site. That's something I think that was long contemplated for the property dating back with people coming on board, I think farming on, I think, a bigger scale. I think that people were looking at CSAs or something like that and not individual community gardens. I certainly wouldn't be inclined to disband the community gardens. I think that they provide a lot of benefit to the people who use them. And, you know, it's a socializing opportunity. It gets people outside. And, you know, I know that there was talk at one point of trying to do something with the extra produce because people's gardens at one year were producing a lot of extra, and they were thinking about, well, can we give it to the pantry? And that gave rise to a lot of timing issues because the pantry only takes, I don't know, fresh produce certain times. But I think that that is certainly something, if people started to have extras, it would be nice to not have it go to waste. I think that clearly there's consensus about using it for agriculture. I think that our problem will remain what to do about the two existing buildings. There have been a lot of discussion over the years about how to develop different things. I mean, I know that the Conservation Commission, at the end of last year, actually got heard about developing the parking place, it's parking area that's off of Ice House Pond. And, you know, I think that you look at that site, and if you don't look just at the farm, you look at the proximity of the rail trail, okay? So that has some history. Then you have the Ice House Pond and the Ice House Foundation. That's got some history. And then you have Morrison Farm, the farmhouse, and the barn, and the landscape. And if you want to go further, you can go across the brook to where you have the museum, the art gallery, and that's what, that's one of the lottery houses. But there's a lot of stuff, a lot of history of the town that's sort of there, and it would be nice to have a way to educate people not only about the farm but about all the other things that are there, and invite them to go there. And we're going to have bicyclists coming on the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail or walkers, and it would be nice if they could just sort of pop over and check out some of the other things that we have. But we need to make it inviting and, you know, so, but that's where I stand. I mean, I've kind of reluctantly am agreeing that we should keep the parcel whole, even though I think that disappoints people who are staunch affordable housing advocates and certainly a disappointment to Habitat, for which I'm sorry. But we're trying to accommodate a lot of different interests on this property, and they're not necessarily consistent, so.
I guess I agree with Katie that we really should not separate out. I mean, I'd be willing to say, from everything I've heard, that I don't want to, but I sort of want to take this as a note to self to maybe set up to work with Habitat, because I really do want the town to more actively move. I mean, we have ACHC in the Housing Authority working, but I would like to see if we can cooperate with them. Maybe there's another property that we could actually work with them on. I can think of at least one that I would think maybe we could work with them. So I want to take this as a note to selves to have that discussion with Habitat. And also, another little thing I noticed in there was that somebody mentioned that we hadn't announced this around, like, in the newspapers, and I realized, maybe we have that problem. We often seem to have forums here as part of our meetings that we don't announce beyond just putting out our agenda. And so people who are on committees or know people on committees might know that they're happening, but we don't actually announce. We're actually at the next Board of Selectmen meeting going to be discussing this, so maybe we need a spot in the paper to do that. So those are two notes to selves. But meanwhile, I am willing to say that I think that we shouldn't separate out. There are too many possibilities, and that I'd be willing to even vote that we wouldn't sell off part of the land at this point.
Okay. I've been an affordable housing supporter since I came to town, was a member of the Housing Authority, the Acton Community Housing Corporation. We have worked with Habitat for Humanity on several projects in town. I was on the CPC when we funded the Habitat Home in South Acton. I think we've done at least one other project with Habitat before that. I understand that the Housing Production Plan particularly pointed out that we should use town assets to help promote affordable housing. There are conflicts between our various plans in town. The open space plan certainly encourages, you know, more open space. The Open Space Committee does not support carving out a piece of town property. And so I do think that the difficulties with accommodating Habitat on this particular site, I cannot agree that we should go with the Habitat option because splitting out the site and rezoning it, first of all, that requires a two-thirds vote at town meeting. I'm not very confident that we could get that in the first place, given the opposition we've heard tonight. So I agree generally with the rest of the board that we should keep the property intact. I guess the next question comes, what do we do with the current house and barn? Who does the work to decide how to create a community farm if we have to? And how do we pay for it? And those are the questions that have kept us busy the last 20 years that we haven't ever been able to resolve.
Can I clarify that if we say we don't want to sell off, we're not saying we wouldn't necessarily entertain housing, like, through rental housing, right? We're not saying anything about that. Okay. I just wanted to clarify.
Well, Habitat won't build an affordable house unless they own the property. So, I mean, Housing Authority is a possibility, sure. I mean, there are other ways of funding affordable housing, so the Housing Authority does rentals, so, yeah. I mean, I suppose it's theoretically possible to rehab the house and rent it out to a Housing Authority tenant, but...
I would not recommend taking a house and renting it out to somebody who's Housing Authority, because they typically don't have resources. I mean, that's, and it creates a management issue for, potentially for the Housing Authority. I think that they create more efficiency and have better services if you have people clustered. I mean, it's also better for the people who live there. You know, if you're talking about affordable housing, you want to talk about owner-occupied, that's a different income category, but...
There are other options for leasing. We've talked about if a farm, you know...
But I think, going back to this 2007 report, there was a recommendation to have the farm steward, the person living there. And this issue, that idea, has come up repeatedly since then. And we even talked about it before we got the Habitat proposal. We were talking about trying to get a farmer to occupy the house and maybe use sweat equity or do some, you know, do some work in the house and all that sort of thing. We were getting proposals to have farm animals, which actually was in this original 2007 report that was contemplated. And we kind of got far away from that, but, yeah. I mean, the idea of having somebody who would live there as a tenant has come up repeatedly, and I think that we figured out, okay, we don't, the town is a landlord, but we have, we can get a management company to deal with, you know, the sort of the landlord responsibilities if it came to that. But there may be some other uses that people would prefer.
Yeah, the Housing Authority generally owns their property and then rents it out, so if they were to, you know, own the property, we'd have the same problems that we have with Habitat, so...
Right. I think if we're talking about leasing, we're not talking about leasing through the Housing Authority. I think we're talking about doing something like a farmer tenant or whatever, more along those lines. But so it sounds like people are willing to take a vote to say that we agree not to, that we agree about not carving out and selling a piece of this land, and I think we should do that, and then we need to decide what the next steps are about making a decision.
You want to make a motion tonight?
I will move that the Board of Selectmen recommend that we not portion off or sell any piece of the Morrison Farm property.
Can we phrase it positively, say that we want to keep the Morrison Farm property intact?
Sure. That the Board of Selectmen recommends that we keep the Morrison Farm property intact.
Second?
Yeah, I would also, okay, we have a motion in a second, so we're into discussion. I think the word "recommend" is problematic. I would rather make an affirmative vote. It's not a recommendation.
All right. The Board of Selectmen, well, if, the problem is if a future board comes and wants to do this, I can't tie their hands. So I can say that this Board of Selectmen feels that we should not, that we should keep the, keep this positive, that this Board of Selectmen feels that we should keep the Morrison Farm property intact.
Okay. Point taken. I mean, I, well, okay.
If you have a way to do it in perpetuity, let me know, but I don't know.
All right. Well, so I'll accept the word "recommend" based on that.
So the Board of Selectmen feels that we should keep the Morrison Farm property intact.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
No, actually, okay.
Do you have more discussions?
Yes. I have two questions. One is, that doesn't mean that we can't move it, like, we're keeping it intact, meaning keep the structures on it.
Keeping the land, no, keeping the land and not selling it.
Not selling off. Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
But I'm not allowed to use word "not" in my motion, so...
That, it was so good. And I, my other question was, is the Morrison Farm Committee willing to continue? I mean, are we...
But that's a second, that's a second question. Let's get this question settled before we move on, okay? Any other discussion under motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Most have passed unanimously. Now, move on to the second question of what we do with the farmhouse and the barn and...
Yeah, just to clarify for you, the Morrison Farm Committee is still a committee that's continuing, but they are not, but they are not focused on, because I think we told them not to focus on the house and the barn, and I don't know that they want to take that on. I'm going to look at you if you're willing to say, we'll go get into it, but...
I think you might want to have...
You're exactly correct, that we've been told not to talk about the barn and the farm, the farmhouse. So I think there's, there are some changes on the committee anyway. A couple people have resigned, so it might be an option for the Selectmen, if they so chose, to give a charge to the existing committee about this and/or add a couple new members at this point.
Can you remind me exactly who's left and what boards are represented? Just so we know what the current kind of makeup of who's represented.
We don't really have people wearing specific hats right now, in my opinion. Annie McGee resigned in June, when he resigned many of his other town committees. And Leanne Baxter, who is an abutter, has told me, and I'm sorry, I don't know whether she's actually formally resigned, but she's moved and does not consider herself the abutter representative.
Moved? She still lives in town?
She still lives in town. And I said, you could still be involved, you have a lot of long-term knowledge, but I think she is ready to step down for a variety of reasons. So the composition was 10, so that if Leanne has truly resigned, that puts us at 8.
Okay. What is the current charge? You were supposed to focus on everything but the structures. I don't remember. Because it would be helpful to know whether we need to modify, how we need to modify the charge.
I'm not sure that we have a specific charge. I can look at that, or you can look at that, but right off the top of my head...
Charlie seems to potentially know.
Charlie, you want to enlighten us?
I have to, I do have to agree that it is difficult going through the website to find information about the Morrison Farm Committee. They're not listed, I'm not saying I'm not blaming anybody, but they're not listed under the list of boards and committees when you click on boards and committees in town. And that's not just true of Morrison Farm. There are other committees that also are in that circumstance.
Correct. Charlie Aronson, and I'll talk to you as a member of the Volunteer Coordinating Committee. The Morrison Farm Committee did have a charge originally. It was modified verbally by the Board of Selectmen but never documented. I could probably find it somewhere, but I would hope that in the town archives and records somewhere, there is a copy of the original charge for the Morrison Farm Committee. In terms of the membership, the original membership did not have specific so-and-so or representative from any other town, but there were some guidelines that were passed down, so we have, for example, an abutter representative, and there were a couple of others. But they're all basically at large because there was nothing ever documented about the composition of the Morrison Farm Committee.
And I think this is my concern. I don't think the Morrison Farm Committee has a...
is now, is in a position to do what we need done, which is looking into these options and coming up with kind of what they would cost, what, you know, some general options would cost and sources of funding, so that we can have an informed discussion about this. I don't know exactly who it is that can do that. I volunteer, but I don't, I know I do not have the capacity to do that in any sort of reasonable timeframe. Just, to be honest. So, you know, we need to figure out who does, and whether that's town staff in some way. If we come up with, you know, maybe at a next meeting, we come up with, here are four options. We would like to know, you know, these general ideas and how much, you know, we think it would cost to get the house in shape to do X, to move it and do X, to tear it down, to, you know, move it and do Y, whatever, and ask town staff to come up with general costs. And then we can talk about, you know, sources of potential funding we see for that. Maybe we do it that way, but...
It might, yeah. It, yeah, some of this, the stuff, the information that we need is probably going to have to come via town staff. I think that there are some, there are a lot of different suggestions that came through about the structures, and it would, I guess, be helpful to consolidate them. And then I think that, you know, if we're interested in exploring this idea about the, what Concord is doing, then, that doesn't necessarily need to come through town staff. It could be somebody who's a resident who's interested in, or already knows about those projects or other uses that we might want to consider. But, yeah, the idea of creating another committee, I just, I mean, maybe, I don't know, do we need another committee? Can we just have maybe town staff and some interested residents working with town staff?
How about this? What if I agree to consolidate in some sort of spreadsheet the options that people have sent in to us, just so we know what they are, and then we can discuss that at, I'm not going to do it by our next meeting, by probably the second meeting in November, and go from there, so that that's a next step at least. I will write those down in a spreadsheet and maybe see, you know, who suggested it, and then we can figure out, figuring out a way to come up with what those, which, if we want to look into all of them, what they would cost, and then making some decisions, and seeking perhaps public input based on those that we've narrowed it down to.
We'll have a big announcement on the front of the website, and, yeah, a little broadcast out of the PA system.
I think that would be helpful, given that we have a half a dozen various opinions on what to do with the property, even if we keep the property intact.
There's a little part of me that wants to say, why wait a year? Why not have, why not move forward, thinking about whether there's something we could use CPC on to sort of temporarily help the situation?
Because if you just go at an idea without having thought it through a lot and gotten buy-in from it, it's going to go nowhere. And if you can do that by the time of the CPC application deadline, kudos, but I don't think realistically that's going to happen.
I was just thinking, if there was something going on, like you were talking about, is it falling apart? I mean, is there something we could do temporarily to shore the barn or shore...
Well, it's temporarily, and, you know, we've winterized it and done, you know, basic stuff to make sure it's not, it's not going to fall down in the next year or two.
We can use, I mean, we can use the regular budget, but, you know, for CPC, it's very competitive, you know, and you really have to know, have really solid information, have a very good idea of what you're doing, because, just because you're the town, you're not going to get special privileges in consideration when you're applying for money, so...
Well, has the Recreation Department got this on your CPC list or radar to, because I know we were, you were making some proposals about, you know, uses you talked about. Is this on your CPC list at all? Yes?
Good evening. Doug Tindall, Old Village Road. I have served among other committees in town as a member of the Morrison Farm Feasibility Study Committee, which was the first phase after the life estate expired and the property became ours and we could actually start working on it, as well as the Morrison Farm Implementation Committee. Each of these phases produced reports, which I hope you have had an opportunity to read. The first of these was the implementation report, which went back to the Board of Selectmen, and we worked with, subsequently with a group that became, I think the report became the Kelleher Study Report in vernacular. That should be in the records for the committee as well. What you should get out of that experience and reading all of those is, this is a very complicated matter, and that hundreds of hours of people's time have been spent on it. And some of us have some attachment to the farm, because I, for example, walk the farm every single day, and I think I've probably been at the farm more than almost anybody in town, in terms of marching my way through the meadows and the woods and around the farmhouse and so on. So there's a lot of people that are reachable, that have an interest in the farm and care about it, and would like to see something intelligent done. I think a great deal of research has already been done, although I agree with Katie that, at this point, and the chair as well, that in Peter's remarks, you look at, what are the physical things that you can do and what would it cost? How can we reduce that to a manageable option? What would it cost to move the house? Up until recently, there was a lot across the street that was empty, and we could have moved it to there. There was, there is a house which is derelict, which is across the street. I understand it's not tax delinquent, but the house is definitely derelict. There's a story there, and it should be explored. The house could be moved across the street to that site. So there's options. I think that it's not rocket science to develop what it would cost to do some of these things and come back to you and say, okay, if we try to make it habitable, and there are serious problems with doing that, by the way, let me just make a remark about leasability. You know, we've talked about carving off the piece of land and selling it so that it could become a residence that's independent. The same kind of problem arises, or similar problem arises, when you talk about renting it. Because once you start renting it, there's a driveway that runs right past the house and through past the back door, and it's a sleuthway of cars. The people who park there every day and are on their way down to the community gardens parking area, and this is somebody's backyard if you've rented the house. So the only way that really makes any sense is if you can find somebody who's a very sympathetic renter, like somebody who's monitoring the activities of a farm program on the site. But absent that, going to the market and having somebody who's alienated from what's going on on all 35 acres of the property, living in the house by themselves without any background, is just a great way for us, all of us, to come to grieve. So if the property's to be leased, you need to consider that even though you're not carving out the land legally, you're going to have to carve it out practically, so that they can get in and they have a backyard and they can park their car safely, and if they have children, they're not in jeopardy from cars zooming in and out of the driveway. And then you have to recreate an entrance to the farmland itself, or to the rest of the Morrison Farm, which would probably be through the paddock, which is fairly nearby. But going through the paddock and creating a new entrance brings you out at the wrong side of the community gardens. So, and from a traffic engineering standpoint, it's going to be tough and it's going to be expensive. So, I mean, we can figure on spending at least $50,000 recreating the driveway in another spot. So there needs to be a powerful reason to rent the house, because obviously financially, we're going to lose our shirts when we lose the driveway that goes by the house and have to recreate it elsewhere. So leasing is very difficult. It's been said here that we're not landlords. We're not prepared to deal with the hurly-burly of collecting rents and making sure that maintenance is taken care of and so on, and that we would hire a property manager. As I understand it, we've had numbers as much as $400 a month for a property manager to look after the property, so that we don't have to interface with the tenants and deal with whatever problems they might have. Against the rent, the manager's fee looks like about 25%, 35% of the rent. So, you know, it's a very, very tough number when you go into the rental market and you can't manage the property, a single-family home, by yourselves. So there's lots of problems with leasing. Making the decision not to carve it out legally and sell it is one thing, and I totally support that. But I urge you to be very careful that when you start talking about leasing it, you're back in the soup, because in some fashion, you have to try and keep that lot together. Okay? So, I mean, I'd be happy to offer my services. I've been in the real estate business for 40 years. If you need any help on working out your options, I'd be happy to do that. I suggest that you set up a subcommittee of two people, maybe three people, from the Board of Selectmen, so that it's very efficient and we don't trigger quorum requirements. Every time I want to talk about, here's how the options are working out, and here's some ideas that we've received, and here's how we're going about estimating costs. Those are practical things. We need to go back and forth with you, and so setting up something that's more, that's more functional in that regard makes a lot of sense. Good luck. Thank you.
Quickly, Deborah Seines. It just occurred to me, as I was sitting there, that I think it's true that we need to move toward an action, a set of actions or decisions. I also think it might be a useful exercise to look at what remains of the vision of what this is going to be, and have somebody kind of comb, you know, compare that with the work that Acton 2020 did to see where it coincides, if there are conflicts, just to make sure that whatever is going to unfold here, you know, aligns with what the 2020 plan directs us to do. And the other thing I want to say quickly, and I don't dare look at it when I say this, but I'm wondering if it's useful maybe for Selby... ...to work with somebody or a couple of somebodies to do that. That's just a suggestion. Thank you.
Yeah, I think one of the problems is if you go through the Acton 2020 Plan, it will say, protect historic assets, increase open space, and build affordable housing, all of which, you know, are in conflict on this site, so...
Right. I mean, I would be more concerned that we were not in conflict somehow, you know, with a particular scenario that people might be investigating, that's all. Thanks.
Peter, if, Katie, if you need help, I'd be happy to work on.
Excellent, thank you. Yeah, I'll just start by trying to gather stuff, and maybe I'll send it to you, and if there's other ones you know about, and then we'll add it to a packet for...
When are we, second meeting in November?
I don't know. What dates are we meeting in November? Because I'm confused about that. I have, I have...
Well, I were meeting on, seven and 21.
Seventh and the 21st? Okay, because the seventh is one week after our 31st meeting, right? So, okay. That's because of Columbus Day, I think. We had to move them up this month. So, what meeting, you want to do the 21st?
21st, yeah, 21st.
All right. Everybody agree with that plan for Katie to outline the various options that we've, that had been proposed?
Sounds great, Katie, yeah. Anybody else?
Try to focus on picking one or the other and how we're...
I think, right now, I'll just do options, and we'll talk about which ones we want staff to do a further look into. That's the best plan I can come up with now, and if we think of another one between now and the 21st, excellent, but...
Okay. Thank you all. All right, so the next item on the agenda, I actually had, I wished that Chin Sung Chang was going to be here. He's our tech guy. I just wanted to put out the discussion on the use of Town Server versus private emails. Not that we are Hillary Clinton, but I, you know, with this litigation over the community preservation funding of the churches, all of our emails, of course, are public record. So I delete a lot of emails. I'm not clear about how they're handled on the Town Server. If it goes to the Board of Selectmen, I think they're archived on the server.
Send them to me, they're archived.
Okay.
But they go to the BOS shell, they're archived, yeah?
Okay. And, but if I communicate with one member of the board about an issue, then that doesn't go through the Town Server, I guess. Pardon me? It's just CCU. Okay. Well, that works, I guess. I mean, we're using, again, so we wouldn't have to, if we were given a demand to produce all emails dealing with funding of the churches, the town can handle that, basically. I mean...
For the most part, unless there's stuff that, like you said, is as private...
Unless we, yeah, okay. I mean, the school, the school committee does have their own emails through the school server. So it would mean two email accounts, basically. You'd use your own personal email for your own personal stuff, and you'd use Acton whatever for town business. And that would kind of, you know, make it much clearer. But that was, that was, basically, I'm just bringing that up as an issue.
I recall asking about that a while back, and because other towns, Selectmen have their own, have their town email addresses, but I think, I recall vaguely that there was a reason that the decision was made to let the Selectmen enact and use, continue to use their personal email addresses. And, yeah, I have to honestly say, I haven't really given a whole lot of thought. When I'm dumping emails, I, you know, I save a lot of town-related emails, but I don't save, you know, I don't have a comprehensive record of every email that I've received or sent on behalf of the town. You know, I don't have a lot of storage available, I mean, so... And there are probably things that I've sent to the town manager that I probably wasn't thinking about having in the archives forever after, but...
Yeah, exactly. Everything you email is public record, so...
Yeah.
Katie?
Yeah, I mean, I'd just say, I kind of prefer just to keep my personal email. You know, I don't really want to deal with another, you know, I've got my work email and my personal email, and then a Selectman email. And it's like, I'm, you know, I know I could forward them or whatever to my personal email, but, I don't know, it just seems like more effort. And I think as long as, you know, everybody's clear that emails you send are public record, even if it's from your personal email, and I guess if you're having private conversations, maybe to try to CC Steve, so it's archived, but...
Yeah, we really shouldn't obviously be having a lot of private conversations about issues or deliberations, but, so, anyway. But, and generally, if I'm communicating with a citizen who has sent us an email on, or sent me personally an email on a particular issue, I always CC the Board of Selectmen with my response anyway, so I guess that works okay. Franny, you have any thoughts about this?
No, I don't.
Okay.
One of the things that I learned to do, I think it was when I, soon after I joined the board, was I tried, whenever I was communicating with one of the department directors, to copy the town manager, just to let him know that. And I think it was a practice I developed because maybe at that time, there were members of the board who were prone to communicate directly with the department heads without, and using up a lot of time and not letting Steve know. And so it was my way of letting him know that I was communicating with the department directors, and so if he had an issue with it, he should let me know that I was taking up too much of their time. But it was also, I think, to let him know what was going on, just in town, in case, so...
Okay, thank you. Moving on, we're on the consent agenda. I'm sorry, we're not going to do it, no. I mean, unless somebody wants to advocate that we should, I'm not hearing any support for that, so...
It would be nice if somehow we were listed, if there was a link from the website that people could communicate with us individually. You know, they don't know how to contact the individual people. So even if we didn't use town emails, if there could be at least a button that would somehow go to us, it seems like it would be nice.
I don't know, we could put our personal email addresses on the website.
We've had other board members in the past that did not want that, so...
But maybe if we had sort of a shell town email that just got forwarded?
That's what we have. So if you have an email, like...
No, BOS, but what if they want to just talk to one or another?
Then they'd say it, because again, I think that's the issue of making sure these kinds of things are archived on our server, so it should go to the BOS email, so that it, and then if they want to talk to me, and they've done this in the past, where they'll be like, Katie, this email's for you, and then I'll respond to that email. But, you know, and, I mean, my private email's on the little Selectman business card I have or whatever, but I don't think...
Yeah, I do, as a chair, get, for instance, I think the Dog Park email might have come just to me, maybe not. I think the petition about the Arlington Street property came just to me. They were asking for a meeting with me, but sometimes, as chair, I do get just personal emails, so...
Yeah. Right. As long as we copy staff, then it's archived on the server.
Okay, moving on. We're going on to the consent agenda. Number five, request to dispose of obsolete material, the Acton Memorial Library. Number six, a sewer privilege fee request for 456 Mass Avenue and 143 Prospect Street. Number seven, meeting minutes, June 6th, June 20th, July 18, 2016. Number eight, accept a gift, Recreation Department. Selectmen to accept a gift totaling $150 to be used toward funding of the new skate plaza at TJ O'Grady Skate Park. Accept a gift. Number nine, accept gift, Recreation Department. Selectmen to accept a gift totaling $25 to be used toward the Narrow Park Landscape Fund. Number 10, accept a gift, Recreation Department. Selectmen to accept a gift totaling $156.06 from Ethan Silva to be used... totaling $156.06 from Ethan Silva to be used toward the Recreation Gift Fund for purchasing plants to beautify Narrow Park. Request for reimbursement for the Jones Field Parking Space. A one-day alcoholic beverage license for Ray Yakobi Nagog Woods Clubhouse for October 29, 2016. A one-day alcoholic beverage license for the Church of Good Shepherd, October 29, 2016. Number 14, change in membership of Kelly's Corner Steering Committee to include one member from any Act in 2020 Committee and two at-large members. Number 15, committee appointment, Bob Van Meter, an at-large member of the Kelly's Corner Steering Committee. Number 16, committee appointment, Peter J. Berry, associate member of the Kelly's Corner Steering Committee. Number 17, board to cancel carry-in permit for Philo's Great Road Incorporated. Number 18, a committee appointment for Ann Corcoran, associate member, Act in 2020 Committee. Number 19, a committee appointment, Anping Liu, at-large member of the Planning Board. Number 20, board, I'm sorry, number 20, land use agreement for 88 Prospect Street.
Move to approve, consent agenda. Second?
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Consent agenda passes?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned.